Okay, I texted him to get your permission. I can just talk along. I can talk about Jay. I can tell you all the things that I did.
Yeah, he talked about three. Might have to be five. That's all worries now.
Well, I just texted Jay.
Okay. I can also call him if I need to.
Hello.
I know, right?
Um.
Your personal, you want me to bring you that piece to stay back there. So if you have any of this personal, of course, I need.
I don't, I don't think those.
All right. I'm gonna call the regular session to order. That stands for the pledge of allegiance. Flag is right there.
Sorry.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion that we approve the agenda?
Christie would like to say something.
Is that the agenda?
Yeah.
This is the agenda, yeah.
Okay. So, within the consent agenda, I don't know how to word this, that we're gonna pull out fiber repair, bus auction, Kuna jump pit, and rock cooler. And have those be action items so we can discuss the prices and where it's coming from.
Can we move those to action items tonight?
And have a discussion.
Or do we have to wait for a month?
Well, they're listed under actions. So we've just taken the actions individually after discussion.
Out and then put them into the new business?
You're gonna make a motion of them after you've discussed them. And then they'll be, they'll be part of the action.
And where do they come in at then, the new business?
When we're doing consent agenda.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Kirsty?
Am I appropriate? Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And so now we're going to do Crimson Point Elementary Principal's School Spotlight Today.
Good evening. I am Shaye Clemmons. I'm the principal at Crimson Point Elementary. And I have a lovely group of educators and grandparents with me tonight. I have Kara Skaggs, she teaches third grade. Sam Waters teaches our SLC program. Mike Kimball is a grandparent of one of our adorable kindergarteners. And then Kaylee Pond is the assistant principal. This year's theme was Heart of a Wildcat. And we'll kind of come back to that in just a minute. But this year was a huge year of change at Crimson Point, starting with me. This is my first year as a principal and my first year at Crimson Point. And on top of that, we had a new instructional coach to our building. And that instructional coach went from full time to split in half between Crimson Point and another school. So there was a lot of leadership changes within the building that we needed to adjust to. We were also building a new system of student support, fine tuning what existed and building on to help fill those holes of academics and students who were reading math. We put in some intervention systems, some team discussions. And we've really implemented a behavior tracking system. And we progressed and monitored that to fidelity this year. And we really honed in on our common formative assessments for specifically math. But that's something that the district as a whole has been working on. We also had a pretty significant increase in student behaviors district by. And in our building, we saw higher, higher numbers and higher needs for those behaviors. So with that change came the addition of a new program. It is housed at Crimson Point. It is called the Structured Learning Center. And Mrs. Waters can speak a little bit to what that means.
Yeah. The Structured Learning Center is, it's a specialized program for students with autism and then behavioral needs. So it's very structured. And we teach specific behavior intervention skills, personal social skills for these students to increase their time as they get better in general education. And so it's been really good to see the progress of my students and what they have made and improvements they have done to be able to pay back with their peers. It's been amazing to see. So I'm so happy that I was able to open this program and be their teacher this year.
This program will begin in October. And right now it houses three of our students. And Mike, if you want to come up and share?
Absolutely.
Mike is the grandparent of this adorable kindergartner. His name is Rowan.
I'm gonna throw parent in there as well. That's okay.
Yes, absolutely.
We, we adopted Rowan last year. And it's been super fun. I typed up, I got like three or four hours. Is that okay?
No, but you can do three or four minutes.
All right, I'll re-.
Just throwing it out there for you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for allowing me to come do this too, okay? So I put on here, we are Mike and Linda Kimball. My wife's not here tonight. She's with Rowan at home. But we're the parents and grandparents to Rowan Kimball. And we'd like to talk about the program that he's in at Crimson Point. And we're super grateful and thankful for this program. The staff has been amazing for the development of Rowan. He has changed so much this school year. Rowan does have autism and ADHD when he has excelled at Crimson Point. Rowan feels a sense of pride now and a sense of accomplishment. We truly believe that this program is going to change his life and help him to grow and become a productive member to society. With his autism, Rowan has had very minimal social skills. His ability to listen, sit still, take direction, interact with people, deal with his feelings and emotions. This has all changed because of Crimson Point and the help he has received. And it's been fun to watch him as he's changed this year. And it's become much healthier for Rowan. He feels really good by himself. We would like to thank Ms. Waters and her team and the entire support staff that are involved with Crimson Point and this program. And to Ms. Clemmons, Ms. Pond, and Ms. Piper. It's going to be life changing for the students. This group of teachers is amazing with the way they have all at some point taken care of, worked with, supported, encouraged Rowan and the students that attend this program. They are all very special people and very good at what they do. And we're looking forward to the continued growth and success from this program. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll take a copy.
Took me like three days to write.
I know, it's hard, isn't it? I'll take a copy. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. You've got a cute grandson son.
Thank you.
He's adorable. We love Rowan. And Ms. Skaggs is going to speak for just a minute on kind of the impact of the changes at the academic level. And kind of what that has looked like as a, as a third grade.
Oh, to you?
Yeah.
Hi, Kara Skaggs, third grade. My teammates and I have always planned well together and worked well together. But we all went at different times to the PLC conference. And we came back and it was life changing. Our Wednesdays are data driven. We have our kids' workout. And it's not my kid, it's not her kid, it's our kids. What are we gonna do? And it's really pushed us to let go of, I love this activity or I love this test and really focus on standards. And then what do we do for the kids who already got it? We've really worked hard on that advanced learner, that GT stuff, and pushing those kids to a higher level. So that has really helped with having those four levels that were, and questions we're looking at. Bring, we bring in our instructional coach to help us. We talk to Shay a lot about, hey, we're thinking of this idea. How would this work? We structured our tier two to focus specifically on phonics and reading to fill some holes because of COVID years and stuff. These kids missed quite a bit of kindergarten first. So we're just trying to catch everybody up. And it really helped us just take our egos out and just plan our CFAs specifically in math. We just started reading, it's a little harder with those standards. But, and we coped through with, what are we gonna do? This didn't work. What next? So those four leading questions, I really want to go back because, to the PLC conference, because there was like 40 things and I only got to pick, you know, four. But, so someday, we all want to go back and keep digging into those questions. Because one and two can get there, but are pretty easy. What do we want them to learn? How do we know if we learned it? But what do you do if they didn't? And what do you do if they did? And that's where we're trying to start digging deeper with our process.
I just have a quick question. By the way.
Yes.
I retired from Crimson Point third grade. So please tell me this is.
I think I'm in the older room actually.
You might be, I don't know, but thank you. My question is, have you seen any improvement after doing this? Are we still waiting to see?
No, no. My advanced kids have grown more than I have ever seen them grow. Some of them grew over 100 points on the IRI and vocabulary. Just based on what we tried.
Great, that's.
And it is helping with our end. We're getting there with that. She's gonna show you up there in a second with some of our data.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see your data.
But it has, it has helped us a lot, fine tune. So it's not just, oh, read this book at fifth grade level. What do we do with that?
Awesome.
How do you dig that out? What are you working on? So I think it's really helped us. We're still growing and learning, but little pieces are coming.
Thank you for enthusiasm.
Thank you. So, part of all of these changes, it was, it was a lot in one building in one year. And the, the impact was great in positive ways and ways that we're still continuing to grow and continuing to learn. But through all of it, we are very proud of where we landed and the celebrations that we have. And we're excited to keep the work going. So one of the emphasis that we had in our tier two groups, our intervention groups, was incorporating our EL teacher into all of those groups, K5. And she participated and was a member of the team in deciding where those students go, what interventions they receive, how we track their data, and how we monitor their progress. And we're excited to say that every single EL student at Crimson Point this year showed growth. We had an average scale score, school by growth of 57. And we exited four of our fifth graders out of EL completely.
Wow. So good job.
This is our ISE, overall building reading data. I know you've seen charts like this probably all year. So green is proficient, red is couple of grade levels behind. Lots of work to do. Our May data wasn't completely in when I pulled this report. Up until April, you can see that we've had steady progress, steady increase. And that is also keeping in mind the changes to the entire system and leadership that our school was experiencing. We were still able to persevere and show that academic progress. The biggest aha for me was the decrease in our lowest students. So those interventions are really, we're really honing in and dialing in what those students need to fill the gaps. And you'll see the same in our math data, where we started in the fall.
Wow.
And where we are.
Look at that green, awesome and red. That is awesome.
We're proud to say that only 3% of our whole school population is two or more grade levels below at this time.
Wow. That's great. To go from 22 to 65 is amazing. Good job, guys.
Is that comprehension as well?
This is math.
Math.
Oh, math.
This is math. So this takes me back to what it means to have the heart of a wildcat. This was an activity we did on our very first professional development day. We had every staff write down their why on a heart and refer back to it all year long. Why do I do what I do? Why do I continue this uphill battle and this challenge? And so we were able to sit down last Friday at our last professional development and reflect on the year and why we do what we do and have the heart of a wildcat. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Way to end the year.
Yeah.
Very nice. All right. Meta Partnership, that's you, Ms..
So, thank you Shay and Kaylee and Kara. You guys are amazing, Sam, all of you. Thank you so much. Chairman Nixon and members of the board, tonight, I'm really excited. We have, in our strategic plan, we talk about partnerships. And we have two amazing, I'm so glad you made it today.
I feel like I was locked down.
Oh, I wanted to get company here. Anyway, I've made two, or we, our community school district has made two amazing partners just in the last month. And they are here tonight too. They have helped me just explode with ideas. And they're like, what about this? What about this? And we've been able to do some pretty cool things. And so tonight, they're both here to present some, some things to us. And so I'm gonna let Katie go first. Katie's from the Idaho STEM Action Center. And I'm gonna let her explain who she is, because that's pretty cool.
You or me?
Yes.
Go ahead. Because I heard there's a camera, so I need to go over here. My name's Katie Bush Wilson. I am from the Idaho STEM Action Center. I'm also a proud Lady Caveman graduate. So I was the second graduating class from the high school over there. So it was kind of cool. But it's kind of cool being back. But my title is the STEM Education Coordination Officer from the Idaho STEM Action Center. If you don't know what the Idaho STEM Action Center is, we are a standalone agency under the Office of the Governor who is tasked with increasing STEM and computer science education across the state of Idaho. So we look at statewide partnerships as well as local partnerships. We have about five pieces of legislation that we're tasked with trying to move the needle in. And everything from just general STEM and education, computer science, to things specific like supporting STEM school scholarships and STEM school designation. And so I was really excited because Jay and I have worked together for a really long time. And so as he transitioned to his role in Meta and started discussing, how could we together, work together to hopefully support the Kuna School District at maybe a higher level? And so Kim and I actually have kind of a weird history. We worked in NAMPA at interchangeable times. And so I was really excited to get to connect back. But one of the things that we have partnered on just in the last month, like Kim said, was, Kim was able to get a grant in through the Idaho STEM Action Center, which we have a big check to present in a moment, for that grant to help the summer STEM program that they have in place to kind of take that hopefully bigger and better, get some kids to be able to have some opportunities that they wouldn't have had prior. As well as, we have a large professional development conference that happens every summer. And one of the things that Kim discussed was hoping to do a similar model that Lisa Gambo does at Hubbard with their First Robotics League. And so we were able to take some educators at the other elementary schools and get them some training this summer that, with the partnership with Meta, but also on our end, are able to send them there for free. And they're gonna come back with about $600 worth of resources that they can then implement into those schools in Kuna. So, can I hand you your check? So, so Kim applied and she got just a little, almost $15,000 worth of funds to go to two school districts.
Can I hear you guys up here, please? Thank you.
That is gonna make a lot of kids happy. Boy, that was great.
For our summer migrant program, that's K-12, there's a bunch of field trips and things. And then Katie goes, well, what about some other things? So we thought of some other things. And then we're sending five, from the other five elementary schools to the workshop that get Katie's 13th in for.
That's awesome.
So we'll have the after-school Lego club at all six of our elementary.
Wow. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So I think I'm supposed to turn it to Jay now?
Uh, yes. Thankfully Jay's here.
Jay, you're right.
So this is, this is Jay Larson from Meta. I met Jay, what, a month ago now, Jay?
Yes.
Yes, we met a month ago. And in our first meeting, we, we were thinking of a small little grant. And Jay was like, think bigger, Kim, think bigger, Kim. And then we got talking about the Lego Club. And I said, let's go over to Hubbard. So we walked over to Hubbard, looked at that. He was impressed. He even went to the expo. And from there, things have blossomed into a whole lot of things. And I'm gonna let you take it, okay?
Thank you so much. Appreciate that so much. And it's always good to know your entrance and your heat dress. I didn't realize there was a door over here to go through. So I'm sitting over there, what, a kid blocked me out? So I'm over Community Development. And as you all know, that we're building an 800 million plus facility over in Kuna, about 15 minutes from here. And we're so pleased because wherever we put these, Meta really wants to make sure we really invest in the community. And it's just not, you know, we want the community to be better. We want it to be, like I've been telling Kim, we want the Kuna School District to be the most innovative school district in the state of Idaho. So it's not just something where we say, well, we'll do it now. We want to help with funding, with programs, and other type of things that are going on. I'll start with the end in mind here, with one of the things we're doing. The Kuna Pupin. One of the things that, they reached out to us and they said, what are we doing? So I met over with them and they said, well, we want to come in and Ross Elementary, every summer, has this program that's called Books, what's it called?
Books and Bite.
Books and Bite. And so they have it, so you come and eat lunch and then you read books, right? So they said, well, we don't have the money, some money to fund it. So I said, well, let's, let's help you with that and we'll help Ross. So we're gonna help contribute $10,000 to that program so it can be done this summer. So that's one of, that's the start. But before I start, I need to, I'm gonna be quick on this, but I'm gonna, whenever I do something, I have to make sure there's a test for the audience. All right? So everybody got this? Here's the test. And please, the school board will be all over this. So I grew up, when I grew up, I have one of the best songs I grew up. And I mean, if you could tell me who sang this song first, and then when they, give you this one, the additional $10,000. Here it is. "I Believe That Children Are Our Future, Teach Them Well, and Let Them Lead the Way." Okay, Wendy Houston, no, who was it?
I had my hand up.
No, no.
It was my foot, my address.
No, no. Anybody?
I thought it was Wendy Houston.
Did Steve, he, no, wait.
I thought it was Wendy Houston.
Very good. Oh, yeah, it's really close. Wendy Houston sang it about 10 years later, 15 years later. And made it a big deal. And she got a number one hit out of it. George Benson. Okay? Now, nobody won it, so I'm gonna keep the $10,000. Let me tell you about what's going on now with all of this. So this is kind of fun. The, the, one of the things that we really believe is that you have to make the impact at the school level. It's organic. It has to be that way. And you have to have parents, teachers, administrators, school boards, all of the people coming together to build or make a difference. And so this is what, so we're excited about. I'm a treasure valley, I grew up here. And I get the chance to go to these data centers where, this data center, when we're done with this one, will be the most advanced data center on the planet that's gonna be right in Kuna. It's gonna be really cool. So, all of these things come in. So let's talk a little about what we're talking about as we connect to community. Met with Kim. And the first time was going over and seeing Principal Burgess over at Hubbard. And I was just amazed. Here we have, are you here?
No.
You're right. I looked around, it's all of a sudden, I go, and she, we're seeing this beautiful, this Lego lab, right? And she actually, I've been, I was over there about three times. And she goes, this wouldn't happen if we didn't have this investment last year, right? And that's a really cool, that program. And the way it impacted some of these students, the learning capability, all these type of things, I was really, really impressed with all of those things that took place. So one of the things we were talking about doing is let's make that, so we proliferate that with Katie and the Idaho STEM Action Center's help to all of that. And that's gonna be, I think that's about $60,000 to be able to put that out and start that, sell those Lego leagues and everything. And really take that train to trainer type things and make sure that there's talent at each one of the elementary schools, of the six elementary schools in Kuna to be able to do that. Then the next thing that we said, we started talking about was really an opportunity to look for ways to be able to bring this AVID program. And I first tell you, I first said, most people in here, you guys know AVID? Okay, so who knows AVID? Raise your hand. All right. Tell me about one person, raise it. What is AVID?
Advanced via individual determination.
And what does it do?
Encourages students to be their, meet their highest potential through various learning strategies.
Yeah, learning strategies is really the right one because it helps them organize and build. And so we went over to Ross Elementary, which I was really impressed with Michelle, the principal over there too.
She's here.
She's here too. You guys are sending students out. And I'm sitting there and that's, and we went and we talked to a lot of students. We saw teachers, we saw a lot of this in action. And we said, and then what Kim said, we're gonna take that and basically take it all the way through and make it so it goes through, it's only an elementary right now, but take it to middle and high school. They said, well, how much that will that cost to be able to train people? And then, Michelle, you're gonna be doing a summer program, right? Where you're actually teaching a lot of other, where there's a program going on with that. So it's wonderful. And so we've got another $40,000 to build, to pay for that. So that was another big thing because if you're gonna do that, and what was really fun about it, I talked, we talked about it, Katie came in and talked about how good AVID looks. So I went, well, if Katie says it's good. So all these things are happening. So this is all reinforcing what your, your administration is coming through, which I think is really, really awesome. So then we had another deal where we said, we'd like to help low income and challenged areas. And so we're gonna, I called it, and I called it, it's called preschool bridge, where it's low income and we gave another, I think that it was $5,000 towards that program. Help it this summer to be able to really make that, help low income children so they can get preschool during the day and also post-event type stuff. So that was another one that we did. The other one that we did was, am I missing something?
You're missing the CNC.
Yeah, CNC, the machines. So last year we gave two to Swan Falls High School. And we're gonna give two more CNC machines. They're basically routers that basically cut.
Big screws.
That makes those type of stuff that we did. And they do a lot more deep end stuff. And that what we did is Still Up Tour last week, which we handed those out to all the participants in the Swan Falls. And Rick Brown, they were awesome with construction management side. We use that so big with Hansel Phelps and what we do. So all in all, we also have one other area. We think it's really important to identify and train, and this works all through the Idaho STEM Action Center, to be able to get teachers that are trained and identified and trained to be able to teach digital literacy. And, and I think that there's, there's a lot of this is starting, but we really want to make that as a big, big deal. Because if you're gonna compete in a digital world, these students have to have that opportunity to really have digital. And it's really hard because a lot of times it's the teachers. You have to have teachers to do it, and then you have to have it. So that's one of the other ones. We put another nine thousand dollars in to be able to help with that any way we can, so. So all in all, we're talking about, this year, we love, we're very honored and privileged to be able to contribute a hundred fifty thousand dollars to programs that we've identified and vetted out through Kim and her team. And we are just honored to do it. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer on any of those. But thank you for letting me come talk about it.
So what school side is CNC school?
So that goes to Rick Brown's construction. There's two more, they already have two, right? One, they have one. And so his construction class made these for Meta for their tour. So last week, when I was on the tour, twenty-seven people got these, like some of the city councils, some of the chamber. Can't remember who was all there. But then this grant will buy two, each one is five thousand dollars. So they're giving a class.
This is for Swan Falls.
For Swan Falls.
Swan Falls, I think that's her question.
So it's a long way around.
Yeah. That is amazing.
Yeah.
And Kim Bechdel, thank you for going out. And thank you, Mr. Larson.
You're good.
I know that our school district can use this for a lot of good things. And hopefully, it'll make a difference in our students. And that I'm excited about. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
And now it's time to carry it out, huh?
Yeah. And all of our elementary schools will have an after-school Lego Club.
That's amazing.
Every teacher that will be part of it will be staking for that.
I like the training of teachers, too. That's a big part.
We'll be able to send all of our secondary people to an Avid, they've already registered for that. And then Jen, I mean, Michelle and Tim and our Avid partner and Kevin have been working on summer PD for Avid for new teachers. And then the deeper, going deeper. So all of these people here tonight are part of that, of our administrators are part of that as well.
That's awesome, thank you. It's a good program.
Yeah.
It's something we're excited about and we wanna continue to look forward. It's only something we really do every year. But it's something we wanna continue to build on and working with partners all the way through. So we're excited about this year and seeing what we can do next year and five years.
I'm excited to see what the kids will do and the scores and the teachers and where we can go with this. Thank you so much, that's amazing. Thank you.
Kim, you have Jay's contact information.
Yeah, yes.
All right.
He's on speed dial.
Well, that just made my day, so thank you. And now CFO Feather, is there any other comments before I go on? Okay. CFO Feather on the Moody's Annual Draft, which is amazing also. Man, we're having good news today.
Chairman Nixon, trustees, well, my presentation is not gonna be as of today. Just the budget update. But, you know, the same information as last month with some add-on details and clarifications. I also, the timeline is the same. So we are here right now. I already prepared and attached the draft document. And I know there were some hiccups with the links. And if you don't have access to that document, we'll make sure that you do. But this is the document that will have all the details, budget reports, and an explanation of each fund. And I do receive a lot of good questions from our community members. And it was actually really good to know that somebody is actually, other than us, is looking at the document, you know, and reading and asking questions. And based on their feedback, I added another layer of details. We're gonna wait for, we're gonna wait for May twenty-first. And this is the actual final document. Will be ready on May thirty-first. And you will have access to that. So you will have at least a few weeks to review and ask any questions prior to the formal budget hearing. So today, I am going to talk about that document. So it will have probably thirty-plus pages. Beginning is the definition of all funds, the awarding agency, where the funds are coming from, the fund number, and the description, how the funds are being used. Then we will also have, I will also have an explanation why we are revising our current school year. Because of the good news. Because we received a one-time supplemental payment. And also, we have to adjust our federal funds allocations. We usually do not know our allocations until October because that's their federal fiscal year. So right now, we're just guessing. We think the total allocation is gonna be this, we think it's gonna be that. But then we revise the budget to show the actual allocations. And we're gonna reduce the expense, which is good news. We do not need to use our contingency and, which is gonna help us in the next school year. So with the upcoming school year, you will see there's gonna be a lot of add-on details, how the revenues calculated, the calculation of units, the salary base apportionment. I was thinking, if somebody asked that question, you know, someone else asked that question, might as well add it all in one document. So you will notice a little bit more details than I usually put in. And the main reason there's gonna be almost a chapter for House Bill 521 because I do receive a lot of questions. And I think a lot of confusion is because two different funds, they just sound so alike. This is like, all of them have that work facility in them. And often, you know, even myself, when I started learning about the funds, I got confused. The same information as last year with some details. So the House Bill 521 is bringing two buckets of money for us. One of them is, and I started using exact the same verbiage as Idaho Code, no more nicknames. So we're all consistent with the state, with the Idaho State Commission, with counties. So it brings the School District Facility Fund, former House Bill 292, it has its own Idaho Code. And it says, "You have for us," it means, "we have to reduce our annual bond levy. Whatever the state gives us, we have to reduce whatever we levy each year and only ask for the difference from the community." And that's what we're gonna do, as we did last year. So that part hasn't changed. The only difference, instead of House Bill 292, it's now, it's living under this umbrella.
I just wanna make sure everyone understands, that's just for the bond, that's for bonding, correct, not levies?
Yeah, so that, yes.
I just wanna make sure that the community knows that that's just bonds.
Yes. It's like paying our principal interest.
Right, right. It has nothing to do with our levies.
Yes, correct, thank you. And then we have, this is the new bucket of money that everyone is talking about. And as you can see, it also says, it's so similar to this, and that's why there's a lot of confusion. School Modernization Facility Fund. And it has its own Idaho Code. So, and I'll talk about timing in a minute. But, so, the funding itself is approved. So it's happening, I'm sure. The timeline is unknown. So, and in that document, I, instead of assuming and double-guessing, I actually took the snapshots from webinars, you know, links to the video recordings, emails on the timeline that the state gave us, to the best of their knowledge. So what they're saying is, well, you have to have an approved annual plan, which we do. You know, we might have some slight adjustments on, you know, some add-on questions that they will have. And then the district has two options. And they will ask us in others. Would you like annual distributions over ten years? Or would you like one lump sum amount? If we say yes to annual distributions, we fall under that umbrella. We can only use the funds to reduce our bond levy until it becomes zero, you know? If we opt in into one lump sum amount, we may use it for facilities and maintenance. So that's kind of very important to know. And in that document also, I mentioned that the board will be discussing the best path in the future, whatever works for the district. The timeline, so they said, things will start happening in August 2024. There will be a survey, they'll have to approve the plan. And then, so, they kind of told us, do not expect less likely you will receive a large lump sum amount sometime in the beginning of the year. It will take several months past August 2024. However, they will try their best to distribute at least a little bit past a few months, maybe past August, once the plan is approved. So, for budgeting purposes, when I create the budget, I'm gonna assume ten percent of the overall allocation because I have the email confirming that. If, you know, if miracle happens and we will get the full distribution during the, you know, within the next, within the next five or six months, then we will revise the budget and we'll include a full lump sum amount. So now, another confusion, a lot of questions were asked during the levy tax workshop that I took last week. A lot of districts started wondering, "Well, what if we opt in into one lump sum amount? This thing doesn't have money and only gives us a little tiny portion. Do we fall under this umbrella or under that umbrella?" We still fall under this umbrella because we opt in, it's just, they don't have money, right? Upfront, you know, they just need some time. So, kind of, if I had those questions, if people call me have these questions, I'm sure everyone has this question. So I thought I'll put the chart in with some explanations. Do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted some clarifications, though. So we don't get this money possibly till August. It has nothing to do with the levy of stuff that we need now. And then when we do get it, then we need to decide, do we wanna take it towards the bond? Or do we want the lump sum and put it towards facilities and maintenance? Which will be a decision of the board. And so, but that won't be till further down, probably next year that we'll be looking at.
Yes.
The next school year. And so it has nothing to do with levy and it's not going to help us.
Yes, the timing is the issue.
And then the other question I have, says facilities and maintenance. Does that, does this money take care of teacher salary, curriculum, technology? Any of those things?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay, that's my other question.
Only fix and build.
Okay.
And even building is limited.
So the plant facility is limited and the maintenance part is limited, too? Little strings attached, no surprise, okay.
Yes, yes. So when I get calls and asking, "How soon will you get access to the funds?" I said, "All I have is the recording from the webinar and the verbal communication that may be a little bit of us a few months past August." But definitely not the full application.
So they tell us what facilities and maintenance we should do?
That is correct.
So, I don't, please don't ask me why. But there is, there are some restrictions for athletic facilities, and I do not know why. So what they're saying, you can build, you can fix, limited to athletic facilities.
But that's the sort of, that's if we decided new facilities and maintenance.
Yes.
If we decided for bond, it's different.
Yeah. But it's pending. It was, you know, there's still some conversation going back and forth. Like, why do you wanna give us a list of what we need to fix? You know, we really know what we need to fix. So it's not finalized yet, but yes, unfortunately, there's some days. Now, another thing that you will notice in that document, so the description of all the funds. And there's three new bucket of money that you will see. So that's the fund, these are the two funds that I was just talking about. They have to be tracked separate because this is how we report our expenses to the state. And then, even though we are applying for one lump sum amount, five point, you know, we are applying for supplemental levy, a half of it is for instruction and then for facilities. We have to track those separate. We cannot combine them together in terms of accounting. That's why when you go through the details, you're like, "Why is it only two point five in here? Where is the rest?" The rest, if, if it is approved. The supplemental levy for facility and maintenance that we're gonna run on May twenty-first, but is approved, it has to be tracked separate. It has to be budgeted separate because this is how we report our expenses just to make, to ensure that we follow our plan. And of course, when it comes to the use of funds, I copied and pasted, especially for new funds, I copied and pasted the verbiage from Idaho Code. So it's not trying to, you know, write it by a words, just as is because it's so new. So the users could read the difference in between two. So in terms of units, we're still moving on with two-hundred-and-sixty-four units. We did a communication from the state saying, "Ah, maybe it's not gonna be as bad." You know, the production, maybe, because they already conducted a survey and we're getting better. They said, "Maybe you shouldn't go with one point five percent, maybe one, maybe less." It never fails us to use the most conservative approach in the beginning of the year. And then we can celebrate at the end of the year, you know? So in terms of budgets, I always say, "Let's assume the worst" because that's what happened last year. So we're just moving on with two-hundred-and-sixty-four units. And then, when you look at this document, the revenue, even though the document says draft, we were pretty settled on the revenue. We already have all our answers. We're, so, most likely between today and June, the revenue amount will not change. So you can kind of already look through it, see if it makes sense. And I added some explanations in differences, why is it up, why is it down? There's some good news that we didn't know the last time I presented. We did receive, that doesn't happen often, you know, but we did receive a refund from our health insurance company in the amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. That's really good. That means that the premiums that they collected versus the claims that were filed, you know, there was, there were some savings in the plan that we have right now, they're supposed to give us the difference. So that will help us with the revenue. Unless you have any questions, so now when we can move forward. So the revenue will not change. So the rev, let me rephrase it. The revenue is budgeted with the assumption, I'm already budgeting supplemental levy if approved. And of course, if it's not approved, that, the revenue will be different. And then we will go from there. So the expenses, we're gonna stay, it's kind of the same. We're following the same target, do not go above forty-nine million dollars. We are in the middle of the negotiations, getting really close. So it's kind of settling with the schedule and everything. It's a, it's a really good process. So that amount will change definitely. It's gonna be either higher or lower depending on where we settle at the end. But, and I always recommend the contingency reserve. We did not have to use it within the last three years, but it always feels good to have it in case of emergencies, I don't know. So, so it's just sitting there in the contingency. And if there is no need to use it, we just move it back to the fund balance. But, and with the, with that, of course, as I was talking, kind of summarizing, what you will see, the beginning fund balance, money in, money out, and the ending fund balance. So just as a reminder, we're gonna continue funding operations. They used to be funded by Essar for a year. And we're gonna use the, a portion of the one-time gap payment to close the gap this year. And as you can see, the numbers speak for themselves. Whatever we were able to save in the prior years, we are able to put in to continue operations. So we're still on the target with a thirteen percent fund balance. I know it's a bit higher than nine percent, but I would highly recommend to keep it at thirteen because extra two percent will help us to invest money in future savings such as funded health insurance, you know, so there is some initial pain. There's a lot of potential to save money in the long run if you have some upfront cash. So the recommendation would be not to go below thirteen percent. And hopefully, this is where we're gonna end. And when, when we negotiate with the teachers, we always keep this in mind. So that's, that's our target. So that amount will change. And the rest of the document, towards the end of the document, I put the detailed descriptions of mostly federal funds, federal funds, you know, all other miscellaneous grants that we receive and all other funds other than one hundred general. So it's mostly kind of a navigator once we go through the general fund. So I already started copying and pasting some information, you know, becomes available. For example, last week, we finally, you know, knew about our title allocation, special education allocation. So, but the goal, the goal is to actually, by May thirty-first, and I'll send you the email, by this date, the document will be finalized. So you can already start going through it right now. By, by that day, it should be all nice and ready so you will have some time to review it for our championship hearing. And with that said, I think that's it from me. Unless you have any questions?
Any questions? I just wanna thank you for putting this all together and explaining it so well. Thank you very much, Victor Feather, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. We're on the consent agenda, so before we approve that.
We haven't done celebrations yet.
We just did.
Oh, wow. I thought we were celebrating, I was ready to go, okay.
Let's celebrate.
Yes, let's go, celebrations, I have to do.
So Chairman Nixon and members of the board, last Friday, we had an annual celebration for all of our staff. And we were able to honor the classified staff of the year from each school. And you see the pictures there. And the next one will be the educator of the year. These were the teachers from every school that were honored. And then we had the friends of the education for this year from each school. And it was really a fun celebration. And I just wanna give a shout-out to Chairman Nixon, who did a great job of kind of... of kind of ending it all for us, we were gonna do one more kind of funny thing, and I told everybody, no, we're gonna end it with her beautiful words of, of sharing at the end, so it was really, it was really, it was fun, it was really nice, so thank you for that too, so it was a great.
Thank you, it was, it was a good time to celebrate, and I enjoyed it very much, so thank you.
And this is really cool, this young man from Kuna Middle School as an eighth grader, Shelley called me and said, this is gonna be a surprise, but Troy won first place last year, and he won two thousand dollars this year for a little video on no vaping, and we're gonna share it, it's just like a minute, he'll, he'll really appreciate it, his uncle is Travis Edwards.
Well, just a shout out, his mom and dad had him third grade.
Oh, okay.
Different years, but they're up there, you're happy.
All right.
As a teenager, I love experimenting and trying new things. Doing something you've never done before is a great way to learn. For example, what will happen if we drop two different sized balls off an eighty foot sidewalk at the same time? Will one of them hit first? Which one will bounce higher? Let's find out. So the tennis ball hit first, but the basketball bounced higher, how far can we launch a potato? That was over four hundred feet. Experimenting, you're trying new things, is part of growing up, but there are some things we don't need to experiment with, like vaping, we know enough about vaping to know that it's something nobody should be messing with. That is finally up to show how fast it can cause permanent damage to your body and reduce your quality of life. Adolescents who vape are almost four times as likely to become addicted to cigarettes later in life. Let's help change those statistics, don't vape, if you do vape and want help to quit, call one eight hundred quit now, there are resources available to help you, so say no to vaping and yes to doing something awesome.
Pretty cool for an eighth grader to do that.
Very good.
He just did a plug for us because we just got a hundred and five thousand dollar grant from the state for halo sensors to put in our secondary schools, and we had another, I think it was like, I don't know how much the other one was, from Office of Drug Policy also for, to put sensors in their schools.
So when you say secondary, is that the middle schools also?
Middle schools and high schools.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So he just helped give us a great plug for, for not vaping, so.
Yeah, pretty great.
And then this was just a shout out, Ryan also is a music educator of the year, we're gonna miss him greatly, he's pretty amazing, very amazing, and he was named educator of the year, so a shout out to, to Ryan Upson. And this young lady, a sophomore in high school, was named as the state vice president of the FCC LA for the state of Idaho, which is quite a, a huge honor.
I read about that, yeah.
For, for a sophomore to be named in the state, she's gonna be doing some pretty good things.
She's gonna be hazing too.
Yeah, she is, yeah, so that's pretty exciting. And I think the communications we just sent in your packet, so that you have those, correct?
Can I just say that?
Oh, oh, yes.
I got this in my water bill and was totally impressed, and I, it was a great thing to send out to our community, so thank you very much, I think that was our communication department.
Yes.
I think they did an awesome job, so thank you.
I was gonna say, when we did some of the levy presentations at some of the schools, they referenced it, they referenced the information, and we got a couple of questions, good questions from it, but they also did get it, so it went out to ten thousand.
Ten thousand patrons, and I, yeah, so I know some of you that don't live in the city, I want you to be able to see, it was a great, great news.
Looks like done without that picture there.
That was my favorite one, wow, all of your qualifications, amazing.
Thank you.
And then next, we have who's annual draft?
Oh, yeah, this is really quick, just good news in here, Moody's, just to remind it, it's almost like a credit score for school districts, and our rating is still A, A3. The highest would be triple A, like there will be three As, we're not there yet, but you know, we are in the highest rank of Moody's rating, which will help us with, you know, with any investments in the future to save on interest, so it hasn't dropped, and that's good news to me.
Yeah, and I want to say, there's not very many districts who have that in the state of Idaho, or one of the few, and so I want to thank this school board and the previous school board who allowed that to happen.
Yes.
By voting for the things they've been voting for, so good job, school board people. All right. So, now, we have a cross off here, I think we are ready for the consent agenda, you wanted to take some items out, correct? So do you want to go ahead and tell us why?
So you're gonna make a motion removing those items, and then we're going to do action on each of those items.
Okay, okay. So Kirsty, you wanted to make your.
Do I do it, or you should sheet it, but if you're the president, you should.
So I do it?
Mm-hmm. She'll make the motion.
Right.
She'll make the motion, and you're going to remove numbers, I think it was eight, nine, ten, and eleven?
Correct.
Yes, so I make the motion to remove number items eight, nine, ten, eleven, and the consent agenda to make into an action item so that we can discuss the numbers and how we're paying for it and decide as a board whether we want to approve them or not.
Okay, and then can we then take those out, and can we approve the consent agenda the rest of it then?
Correct.
Okay, do you have them, do you have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kim, aye?
Aye.
All right, and now?
They're gonna approve the consent agenda?
The consent agenda has been.
Approved.
Approved, except for those items.
Now we're going to open discussion about the number eight.
Fiber repair, all right. Can you bring that up for us?
We are able to open it here because of the way it's being set up on the slide deck, so you'll have to open it on your computers.
Okay, let's see if we can do that. All right, got it.
We have questions or need some help.
Jason Ready?
Do you guys need my help back there?
We need your help to discuss.
Oh, which side of the table do you want me to?
Sure.
Your side.
Do you want to tell us how you came to that, and who, did you put out for bids, and how you did that?
Yeah, we got two quotes for that repair, one from Agnetics, who is one of our main vendors, they serve us a lot, they've helped us a lot in the past, and then we got another quote from Quality Communications, which is the company that we use for all things fiber, everything that they, everything that we've done with fiber in the past for our school district, we've used them for that service, so we got two quotes from both of those companies. The Agnetics quote came in, I think, five dollars more or five dollars less, it was like they knew the mark they needed to hit and they just adjusted one way or the other. I don't know why they did that, that's what they did, but we just, our, my recommendation is that we would go with the quality communication bid because they know our system, they know our fiber, they know all the things that we do.
So Agnetics was five dollars less than this, basically, is that what you're saying, is the bid, so this was the, it was the lowest bid?
Which one are you looking at? Can I just?
He just, she's looking at the quality communication.
Okay, is there one down below here?
No, I just.
That's one I have, so that's I.
I think it's in the board packet, is it in there?
We just have the one.
Yeah.
We just have one bid.
Just one.
Do you want me to share it with you real quick? I'm sorry?
How are we paying for this?
Yeah, it'll come out of the technology budget.
Okay, so you have a budget for this and it would be out of that budget.
We're gonna find a way to squeeze more blood out of the terminal, yes, yeah. It's something that we need to, so the story behind this, just so you guys understand, this is the, the little annex building house in front of KMS, the school district used to use that building.
The green, the greenhouse?
We had, yeah, a little greenhouse, little farmhouse, we had fiber that comes out of Kuna Middle School, out of the roof, and went along a supported metal beam, I guess, for, or wire, the fiber was hooked to that and it went into the building, and while the police occupied that facility, they use their own internet service because of the rules and restrictions that they have, they can't ride on our internet because they're doing police things on their internet that school district shouldn't be doing on their internet probably, and so while they were there, the, the internet service was just kind of terminated in the building but not being used, it was just essentially sitting there dark. Over the course of that time, a van or something like a big box truck drove in between the two buildings, because you can drive around Kuna Middle School, and hit the fiber that was on the metal wire and ripped it, so it's just been kind of coiled up there for several years, and, and it was never a problem because we didn't need it, no one was using it, but now that they have vacated that facility, we need to get it wired back up with some internet and get it hot, so that when we do use it for meetings, for offices, for kids activities, we're gonna need internet in there, we're gonna need an access point, all those kinds of things, so.
It's too bad we couldn't hold that person liable while they get away.
Yeah.
Driving the box truck.
Was it one of our people? I, I, you know, sir, I don't know. I have my own theories on that one, the, yeah, before, that was before my time.
Any other questions?
I, I make a motion that we approve the bid from Quality Communications for six thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
JD?
Hillary?
Hi.
All right, the next one is.
Thank you.
Thank you, is the bus auction request.
Yeah, you'll need it.
Robert, aye?
Yeah, they're, they're just going to an auction and we're, they're asking to bid up to twenty-five thousand dollars for a used bus, they're not saying they're gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars, they're just.
Correct.
Asking if they can go to the auction to bid on a bus. I think it's a good idea, it's, and it's gonna cost less than a, than putting a new motor in one of our buses.
Correct, that, that.
That's what they said.
Yeah, both our mechanics went and they do a quick, they know what they're looking for, and it's cheaper than the international engine that would replace, and, and also Brenda said we're done with international, but expensive.
And this is the normal procedure for us to get buses, isn't it, correct?
Ah, used buses, correct.
Used buses, and it's gonna be a used bus, aye?
And it says we have available one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
We have that money in a, it's called a bus depreciation account, so every year we buy a new bus, then you get depreciation on that bus to continue purchase, that, now part of that money's been earmarked for a bus that we're waiting for, it takes them about two hundred, two hundred, it was like two hundred, two years to build this bus, it's the one with the lift.
The one we approved.
Or special, yeah, that was a lot, so, so some of that money will, most of that money will pay for that, the twenty-five is available in that account.
So your goal is to do less than twenty-five, but that's your, that's your max?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
At the auction.
I can, yes.
And then also, does the state reimburse them with that?
Yes.
The, the reason it's twenty-five, because that's all that's left, actually, people at special education, they would like to go higher, but that's what they have left, that's why.
I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed that they can do it for less.
Absolutely, yeah, and it, the last couple of minutes is that auction is the fun part, so.
Is that what you're doing?
No, I don't, I don't bid on it. I make a motion to approve the bus auction request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the Kuna High School high jump pit.
So they did ask, they did get two bids on this, and our poor, our poor high jump pit has been, I don't know how many years it's been there, but it's not safe for the kids, and they're gonna, they are gonna, they put a new top on it last year, or a couple of years ago to stretch it for a few years, that made it a little more safe, and then now they're gonna move it to the middle school, so, because the middle school doesn't have any equipment to use all the high school stuff, so they're gonna repurpose that one, kind of the same thing we did with the pole vault pit, the old pole vault pit's being used by the middle schoolers, so they're gonna repurpose it, they did get two bids, and the one bid that they have here is for ten thousand or something.
One thousand two hundred and thirty-seven fifty.
Yeah.
And then there's another one for nine thousand nine hundred and ninety.
Which one, which one are? I don't know, which one are they wanting?
It says preferred on the top one.
And how are we paying for this?
I think it's, it's through the track budget.
So track has the budget for this?
Yeah.
Okay, do you know why this one's preferred, is it?
Assuming it's better, I mean, when I, when I called, so when I called for the pole vault pit, I called three or four companies, and the qualities are all different, so I would assume that that's a better one.
Was, was the second one on a?
Does track raise money for their expenses?
Yeah.
Did they have a booster plan?
What's that?
Do they have booster plan?
No.
No, you just, I'll do it.
Do you know if the, if the top, it also has a tendency to, like this second sentence?
I have no idea.
So who, who paid the quote?
I could be wrong on the, was one of them, was one of them that looped top out of Minnesota and the shipping was gonna be ridiculous?
Maybe, I'm not sure, I would go with the preferred because.
One is out of Rhode Island, the other is out of California.
I'm pretty sure Luke did the homework on that.
I'm gonna show JD the two bids.
I would, okay, go back to the other one. That's the preferred one, and then within.
It's like it's within.
Yeah, it was free shipping.
It's within like three hundred, two hundred dollars.
The shipping and the price, which was seven nine hundred and ninety thousand, and then there was a ninety.
Yeah. Ten, ten thousand two hundred versus nine thousand.
Well, let me look at the brand, no, go back to that one's Gil, this one is first place, and Gil is actually a better, yeah, it's better equipment.
And it's very close in price.
Yeah, it's not that different.
I make a motion that we go with the preferred bid for the high jump pit.
Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry. JD, can you say the amount of the?
Much, yeah.
The amount, which one do you want? Do you want this one up here?
The preferred one.
Right there.
In the amount of ten thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, let's start with the other end, Hillary?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And Kirsty? All right, so passes, all right, number eleven, walk-in cooler.
Who's that? Walk-in cooler?
Yeah, I'm gonna have it. Ms. Swanson, join me.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Swanson's our challenge manager. Oh, yeah.
But I know we just approved one, meant to go for a different school, correct?
This is Silver Trial, Alentree.
Yeah, this, we, we bought some steamer, this is, this is the opposite, almost, right?
Hot, cold, it's on Gil.
We have an gate operator going out, is our main issue, is Silver Trial, and that's the unit inside the walk-in, it's coming apart, it's blowing, I guess it's made out of aluminum copper, it's blowing that dust all over inside of our walk-in, and so we finally kind of got to the end, you know, bottom of it, and had a couple of people come out and quote, Idaho Refrigeration is the company that we use primarily for all of our refrigeration, and I think their bid was just under eight thousand.
It's eighty-seven fifty, I think.
Eight thousand seven hundred and fifty for the total, and it's six thousand five hundred and twenty-two fifty.
And the other one was General Parts, they're, they're the second one that have come out and give us a quote, they're the ones that have installed our rational ovens, we've done, that kind of work with them, not ever refrigeration work, and so we have them come out and give us a quote, and theirs came in considerably higher.
So this was the lowest?
Yes, yes, and they've done, they've done a lot of work for the district over the last, hmm, probably ten, fifteen years.
And where does the money come out for this?
That money is coming from Pond, correct?
Yeah, when we didn't do the refrigeration. Yeah, when we didn't do the refrigeration here, we put in the two ovens, we had money left over. And she foretold the future with her next problem, this is gonna have that twenty-seventeen bond, there was earmarked for child nutrition. We just, we still have a project that we're gonna have to do at some point.
At some point, but we're giving up one thing to take care of another, and this is more important, obviously.
I make a motion that we approve the request for Walk-In Cooler for eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, right?
For Idaho Refrigeration, right?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? We'll start with the other end, Hillary?
Aye.
JD? Kim, aye, Michael?
Aye.
And Kirsty, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, Louis to delegations. We have two delegations tonight, Melanie Phillips. And the topic that's being addressed is language testing for elective credit options, Melanie?
Hi.
And, um, of course you have three minutes, you know that, and.
I don't even have a timer above your head.
I know, really, we should quit, Melanie, I think that, Dan, do you have something just to show?
I don't, I'll just do this.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Here, yes, do it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So I, I was curious about something, um, I have some sons that have got college credit by, um, testing out a different language, um, most recently Portuguese, and they got twelve college credits. And I thought, I wonder if that's something that our high schoolers could do, if they know different languages, especially our high schoolers that are, uh, English is a second language. So that was something I was looking into, I spoke with Angelie Dower, she said that they use the CLIP test, but that only tests for German, French, and Spanish. And I was wondering if we could expand that, especially with a lot of the refugees that are moving into our school district and a lot of our students that have different language sets. Um, so I just was, I'm working with her, but also researching, I talked to somebody that, um, is representative for the FLAT testing, which is an acronym for foreign, foreign language assessment testing, and he said that they test for thirty different languages, including some more obscure ones like Tchamalik and, and Sivano, and so, um, I was just wondering if that's something that, I don't know who the powers are that be, but I talked with Mr. Vicker earlier, and he said that was something to look into. But I just thought that would be a great thing to, um, offer to our students, not just the ones that speak Spanish, French, or German, but may get more across the board, especially if English is a second language, this is a way for them to get college credit potentially, high school maybe elective credit, so that it helps meet the requirements needed for graduation while they're already struggling with English as a second language, trying to learn and get these different classes, so, anyway, that was just something that I just wanted to, I don't know, bring to your attention, but I thought that would be a great thing for us.
Thank you very much. All right, our next is John Strickland. Uh, the topic is mini golf, and, um.
Have to make the meeting exciting, sorry.
You're fine, just so you know that we're here to listen to you only at this time, and we appreciate what you're doing, but we just can listen, so.
No, that's totally okay, and I was not prepared to come here tonight, I was gonna put a proposal together, but my wife changed everything. So my thought was, uh, I'm a, um, synthetic grass installer and a supplier, okay? And the city had all the booths behind the Fourth Street Gym, and we just recently helped a gentleman with his miniature golf course. And I was thinking, with the price that he built his for, that possibly we could do a nonprofit behind the Fourth Street Gym to build a miniature golf course with a little concession stand. Um, and with that, uh, open it to the public, obviously for a fee, but, um, where it changed is from a profit to a nonprofit because of some different business deals that we're, we're gonna be doing. Um, and with this little miniature golf course, we could do stuff like fundraising, um, with different groups from the schools, or whatever types of things that might need to be fundraised for the public. Um, and hopefully, with this type of a nonprofit, raising money and stuff like that, it would be self-sufficient and gradually grow to be something even bigger. My mind's always going, so I dream big. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that before the, the school board, just to kind of get that idea in your head, I can write up a proposal for it to show you exactly how it would work, would propose lease or something like that would be, um, anyway, it would be something really fun and exciting for the community. And I think bringing people in to build it would be extremely fun, so, anyway.
Thank you. All right, thank you for the delegations tonight. Uh, unfinished business, considered the update to the district plan to mitigate the financial pack of development on the Kim High School District and taxpayers. Director Graves and Trustee Thornton.
And Principal Reno.
And Principal Reno.
He was one of the city council, was today, so he wasn't positive he's making, I'm not even gonna pretend to know what I'm talking about, I'm just gonna bring him up right away.
Can I just tell you, I went to city council, maybe even there over like that, my goodness.
And, and I know Trustee Thornton joined us for that city meeting, so please, y'all, bitch.
So, so the board has directed me and Daniel Horace to do the strong relationships, strong partnerships to grow the mitigation. And so, part of that is part of our strategic plan, and we've asked you guys, or you've asked us to get voluntary mitigation from developers. Um, we need feedback on potential changes to what we ask for, um, to respond to quick donations. For example, uh, they might wanna donate four acres in this area, or they might wanna donate a bus here, or they might wanna do that there. We could never really do that quickly with you, but with the city code that changed, we can do that, so.
All clear, I can at least do that.
So, um.
So when you talk about the city code that changed, does that have to do with the mitigation that came through the city ordinance type thing?
Yes, the ordinance that changed.
Do you wanna jump to that and then jump back to action, or that'd be easier?
Yeah, let's go back. So, yeah, updated the city code, so, uh, Trustee Thornton, myself, um, we're there with Mr. Bruce, um, and Mayor Steer to review the ordinance, and basically, um, they changed, they added including school districts, including school districts. So we are as important as infrastructure for development. So now, city council, as we can deny based on, on those aspects of our capacity. And it also changes our letter that we provide to them, um, as effective funding, we can now add the mitigation component to that, so.
So what was the discussion about the ordinance in?
In the meeting, that we are allowed to, uh, say our capacity, and we can deny our capacity, and we can put, and we can put in the letter what they are doing to, for mitigation, in the past, we were not, we were recommended not to put the mitigation in the order.
And the mayor was, uh, on board?
Yes, yes. So, we, so Daniel and I, with my criteria, when we hear from developers, you know, we know a ten acre size for an elementary. We know thirty and forty acres for a middle school, we know sixty acres for a high school, those are set, those are set land, um, benchmarks by our district, by you guys. But what gets tricky is, they wanna do four acres, they wanna do five acres, because Mr. Vicker is working on a learning lab for FFA. Well, that became a, a negotiating act for us, but a developer on board, well, we didn't know how to do that. And so, we, we want action from you guys on smaller parcels, so if they give us a lot for to resell, or to build a house on, or to do that, how, how would you like to see this?
Discussion?
Well, I would like to see each, each particular piece of land brought to the board, rather than a blanket criteria of acceptance. Just because four acres one place might be fine, and four acres another place might be garbage, and even ten acre spots, I feel like every land or other than cash donation should be brought to the board for its unique approval.
And I agree with her, because I, I think it depends on what we can use, when we can use it, and how we can use it. Uh, and like you were saying, the land lab, you know, that might be five acres, I'm not a farmer, so, but there are things that we could maybe use it for or not use it for, so I, um, I agree with, um, Trustee Low there that I'd like to see what they offer. Um, and I, and I'm open to that, anybody else's discussion?
Well, I, so I know that doesn't really necessarily give you a blanket, uh, opportunity to go in and say yes or no. Uh, but I agree with that as well, that every piece of land is unique, and that we need to decide whether or not it's beneficial to our district or not.
Yeah, and I'd like to open it up to them too, to see how creative they are, that's part of the mitigation, not as telling them what they need to do, because then it becomes an impact fee kinda, so I, I like the idea of keeping that open for that, that mitigation.
For a lot of them, that's new, being able to do that, they were used to being.
Oh, I, I, I know.
That's the hard part, but no, I mean, because, yes, and thank you for this correction, and, um, because it will help Daniel and I moving forward.
Well, you know, because capacity is a big issue, and so even if you approve three acres, that means we're accepting one hundred, two hundred, or a thousand kids, which we don't have before, so every situation is.
All right, do I have a?
Is, is that clear enough, or? Yes.
Do we need to have a motion?
We do, it's an action item.
Because in the past, you would suffice a land donation, the equal, the, the amount of mitigation fee set by you guys would suffice. And so, that is the, that is where.
Was that thirty-two?
Thirty-two, thirty-two hundred dollars.
That's I thought per place.
But what I don't think it negates that, it's more of land, or any other type of donation.
Other than, other than cash.
Other than, yeah.
Yes, because that's what the, that's what you've been given before, it's not straight cash, what is the mitigation you will allow for capacity?
All right, do I have a motion?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that any voluntary mitigation contribution other than thirty-two hundred dollars a door be brought to the board for its individual approval.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll start with you, Kirsty.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kim, aye?
Aye.
The motion passes, thank you very much.
Um, didn't want to update you in our letter that we do send to the city, we now updated the, these numbers.
I saw that, I like that.
These are, these are new numbers, um, not new numbers, but the data, it's, and this, this data was provided from the city. So they, this is how many homes there have been, and so you can see our hotspots, there's still hotspots, or even hotspots in the future.
So when you say projected capacity, like how far in advance are we projecting?
This is just a.
Two levels and subdivisions.
Yeah, so like, right now, in this, in the crimson points, there's four hundred places, homes that have already proved to be built.
And the capacity's five hundred.
Okay, so it has to do with what was approved a year ago.
Yes.
And being educator, I love the data-driven, thank you, it gives us numbers.
So if you want to see the new letter, it's right there, if you have any questions, feel free to jump.
All right.
It's still draft, obviously.
Yes, um, this, um, Jill, like, is the commander right now, so.
All right.
But this was just an update that.
Updated about the, yeah, Littleton City Council.
All right. All right, and I believe last month we took a look and took out the liability insurance coverage, and now we wanna take a look at that. And so CFO Feather, if you'd like to talk to us about that tonight.
Not so good news in here, so we finally got our code, and we advertised our piece in the local newspaper, even sent an email to random liability insurance companies, originally we have, we have two companies telling us that they will submit a bid, and one withdrew. So we only have one bid as of today, and, um, that's the same company that we have, and the increase is almost one hundred thousand dollars. That's why I said not so good news.
Just a second, I'm gonna find, I need to make this bigger.
Oh, okay, sorry. The, the screen works.
No, no, you're fine, I'm hands, so you can go ahead, we're talking, I just wanted to make sure.
Something like, uh, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so since the increase was almost one hundred thousand dollars, it was a shock to me, so I asked them to write an executive summary explaining why. And, um, it all goes back to that fire that happened in Pocatello two years ago. So based on their explanation, the company itself was in a huge deficit, um, over two years because of the, uh, claims that they had to pay, and they still ended up with a six million dollar deficit, and the way it works with the insurance companies, at least here in Idaho, it's a pool. Like, we all districts, we pool money, and then if something happens to one of the districts, it's almost like car insurance, everyone's premiums go up because they have to balance things out, at least this is the explanation that I received. So, um, Troy, if you could go back to the actual amount, so yeah, the, the, the premium amount is, um, three hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred and forty-two. So they said that we cannot promise, but they're hoping that increasing the premiums for all districts will bring the balance to the insurance company, and from now on, the increases should not be significant, so we should create a stability, but nothing is guaranteed. So, and, um, talked to Nampa School District, Boise Caldwell, um, West Data, everyone with the same insurance company, because there are no other companies that are submitting proposals. Also experiencing, I just wanted to make sure we're not the only ones, so I had to call and ask, are you experiencing the same increase? So it was across all districts, so right now, that's the only option we have, we will continue shopping for the upcoming school year. We're hoping that the company that withdrew will get enough information, and we'll shop around, and maybe we'll find a similar insurance with a similar pool, but for now, that's the only option that we have.
So we had another proposal, this was the, yet, okay?
The only one, and that's the final, and, um, and we have to, so the offer is good until May thirty-first, or, uh, the end of May. Um, and other, otherwise then they will have to write a new one.
A new proposal, and basically the increase has to do with Pocatello, is what I'm hearing you say.
Let's blame them.
I know, and I'm all for that, let's just go ahead and Pocatello, no, thanks a lot, but, um.
But you have a budget for insurance.
Yes, it's already budgeted in, so the expense amount that I presented earlier.
It's a little bit higher than what you were hoping, but you still have the money for it.
Mm-hmm, we do, we do, and we did, uh, the health insurance company came back and gave us almost four hundred thousand dollars back. There is thirty thousand reduction in the workers' compensation, so everywhere else is either the same reduction, so that will definitely help to offset this. But I was, I just did not expect one hundred thousand dollars, usually it's twenty thousand, twenty-five, and, um, but that's the explanation that they gave us, hopefully things will go back to normal.
And you like the membership of the ISBA insurance team?
I think that's what keeps it down a little bit, is that my understanding?
Yes, yes, because we're all pulling money together.
This is where Chairman Erickson used to work too, and this is.
Yes, Carl.
What's the name of the company, I-C-R-I-P?
So, um, so that's, uh, the, the company, our broker, it's the Morton Company, but the insurance pool that they're using, um, is this, and I, oh, gosh, I did not remember.
Idaho County's Risk Management Program.
Thank you, Dean, thank you.
Thank you, Deanne.
Way to go. And we also went through a, a property assessment with all of our properties, and he's hoping that that will also help our rate earnings year. Um, all of our, all of our properties will reassess.
And so our, this is the recommended insurance plan from ISBA, is that correct? Is, how is it connected, I guess it's just saying, thank you for your continuing membership of the ISBA insurance plan, so I don't really understand what that is.
So we would have been able to use them even if we were not members of ISBA. Um, I do not have the exact information, and I will follow up, we do get some points and discounts for being a member because so many districts are the members, and, and I, I can look up for that information, but even if we were not ISBA members, we could have still requested a quote from that insurance company, yes. It's the more members we have in that pool, supposedly the better premiums are.
That is different districts, that's different districts that.
We all come together, different districts, like, come together.
Surprised, I do not like to use the word, but it almost sounds like a monopoly, almost all Idaho districts are within this company because that's the only company that has enough money to pay something very bad happen, like happening in Pocatello.
And it does kinda look like that's at risk. And it does kind of look like that's at risk now.
So hopefully not for, hopefully they will balance things out this year.
Yeah.
They're, they recovered from forty-four million dollars. They only have six months to recover from.
All right, do I have a motion to accept this bid?
I make a motion to accept this bid for.
I.
I C R I P.
Yeah, for three hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars for insurance.
Liability.
Liability insurance.
It's pretty unliability, right?
Pretty unliability.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All right, we'll start with Kirstie.
Aye.
Michael? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you very much. Uh, and now we're gonna take a look at the calendar, changing the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five calendar to align with Southern Idaho Conference and school districts around us. Spring break, I believe, is what we're looking at.
Yeah, if you remember, Trustee Bruce sits on that committee with us. We planned out our two school years, this year and next year. And the biggest problem we had was Nampa chose a spring break, West Data chose a spring break. Everybody on Nampa's side went there, West Data sat there, and we were like, which spring break do we choose? And everyone wanted a two weeks spring break, but we couldn't do that. So I, I think we originally went with West Data and there was complaints. So then we did a vote, we put it out to our community, and then they chose Nampa and it didn't matter. We were wrong either way. Um, Nampa is now, and, and the east has turned west, sorry, has changed their spring break for next year. So we are the only district right now that's still, and Emmett, are still hanging out there with the last week. So we're recommending that we go and have the same spring break as everyone in the valley, so.
My only questions is, it doesn't mess up the teachers' hours, teachers' pay, or that?
No, but my question is, where did the proposal come to change? Was it from the teachers, was it from?
I think it really came through the principals. The principals spoke about it quite a few times at SIC meetings and they trying to get, like, can we all just get on the same page about this one thing? What we have is, we have people that live in West Data, so their kids have a different spring break. The teachers, it's just, it caused all kinds of things beyond sports. But spring is that time where people are doing tournaments and try to schedule their spring break. So this just gets everyone with a unified spring break.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, last year, there was something that was kind of big that swayed us that way. Yeah, I mean, if you guys are cool with it, then it's gonna work better for the teachers and everybody.
And the kids.
Yeah.
Could be a little crowded at Wahoos. Yeah, exactly, could be a little crowded there.
I mean, as long as it doesn't mess up anything, then I'm yeah.
All right, do I have a motion that we accept the calendar with the change at, uh, spring break?
I assume so.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All right, now let's start with you, Hillary.
Aye.
JD? Aye. Michael?
Aye.
Kirstie?
Aye.
All right, so passes. All right.
You should meet it.
The next one's me. Yeah, I think I can do it from here. Um, my concern is, um, looking ahead, that we take a look at a cap, putting together a capital planning task force to take a look at bonding. We don't know when, but we need to take a look at that by community members and set up that task force to start that procedure. That has to be, it's a board committee, so it has to be okay from us. But I think it's something that we need to be transparent in, bring in the community members. Uh, and I would like to have at least someone from this board on that also, um, to report back.
I would be open to be on that board.
Um, do I have an action that we, um, start the capital planning task force? That would be.
I guess, does that mean that, um, does that mean that we're moving forward with planning for a bond? And do we want to wait to determine that based on the levy or?
Well, those are, those are.
Those are all the questions too.
Yeah, and I think the way that they have now, the months, we can't go till November. And then we have to go in May, and I think it would behoove us to be proactive in this and get started. It doesn't mean that we're gonna do it in November, doesn't mean, it's just a matter that we need to start working with the community, coming together, taking a look at what we have, where, what we need and our needs. So I think that that's an important thing to do.
I make a motion that we, um, we start a capital planning task force committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, should we go ahead in that motion and decide who's gonna be on it?
Does someone else want to be on it with me, so there's two of us?
Uh, just two is all we can have?
Yes, I know.
I, I would like to be on it.
So you, you want to be on it?
I would be open to do it also.
It doesn't matter to me, Michael's fine too. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to let Michael and Kirstie do it.
Okay. All right, that sounds good to me, so let's put that into our motion. Who's making that motion?
Make a motion that we, um, start a capital planning task force with Trustee Thornton and Trustee Bruce participating in that task force.
Do we also need to say that it's gonna be made up of community members? Okay?
And how are we gonna determine those?
In the past, we've determined it through our assist, our superintendent has kind of taken a look at different things. And they've got community members, teachers, business people, the mayor, some of the past.
Business people have come to me and said they would like to be a part of it, is that okay as well?
I, I would assume.
Okay.
I think we'll have another action item in making the members of that task force.
That would be something that we'd, so if you wouldn't mind putting that together for us, uh, for the next meeting, so we can get started on that, that'd be great. So now, do we have the right motion there? Yes. All right, do I have a second?
There'll be a second motion. There'll be another action item at the next meeting to have those members added to the, to the task force.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, and?
I seconded.
All right, in all favor, first.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, all right, we are on to new business discussion and action items, and Director Ready? Whiteboards for the classrooms.
Whiteboard?
I only have one slide, so.
Um, so a quick little history, I've given a lot of history tonight, I guess I'll give a little bit more. So in December of twenty twenty, you guys as a board, our school board, approved, um, using some of our two thousand seventeen bond money to replace some of the old dying and dead and outdated classroom technology protection stuff, right? So we have smart boards, short throw, uh, smart projectors, and those things had reached their end of life and needed to be replaced. Um, I think I had been on the job for about two months at that point. And so we came to you and asked for permission to use some of that, uh, bond money to purchase items to replace those things. Uh, we went through about a year where we sought feedback from lots of different stakeholders, teachers, administrators, district level folks, students, um, to ask them. We presented lots of different options, um, all of our principals, I don't know if you guys realize this, but every single school in our district is represented tonight in the audience with an administrator.
Awesome.
That's pretty cool. That I don't think happens very often, so thank you guys for being here. So we sought their feedback and asked them what they would prefer. And, uh, after that process, we selected some ViewSonic touch panel TVs. And, uh, so we are going to be putting those in this summer. We have about a hundred and ninety-three of them that we're gonna be installing in classrooms. That gets us about two-thirds of the way through all of our classrooms. Um, but being new, to be honest with you, I, uh, didn't think about the fact that when we take down the current whiteboards at the front of the classroom, some of those classrooms have twelve-foot whiteboards on the front of them, uh, which we affectionately refer to as widowmakers. Uh, and the technology department, they're super heavy, they're big, and so we gotta take those down and replace them with some other whiteboards on each side. And so we are gonna be putting, uh, some four-foot whiteboards on each side of those TVs. And I honestly didn't plan for that expense because I was still learning some of the ropes and what all of the things were in our school district at the time. I didn't really have a good understanding of what every classroom had and kind of the scope of the project. So, uh, that's why we're here today to ask, I'm here today to ask you if we can use, well, I have, I guess there's two action items. One is to approve the quote. I got two quotes, um, from two different vendors on, uh, the price per item. And so this is the one that we're asking you to approve. This is the company that our school district has always purchased whiteboards from. They're a local company, they do a really good job. The quality of them is really good, they're magnetic, you know, all the things, um, that we need them to be. And then the other quote was from another company, um, over on the east coast also. Surprisingly, their acronym for their company is also SBI, uh, which is super confusing. But, uh, their quote was about a hundred and something dollars, a hundred and nine dollars more per item than this company that we've used. So asking if you would approve the purchase of that item because of the dollar amount. And if we can use some of the two thousand seventeen bond money that continues to keep giving, uh, because we have some interest building up there. We have about ninety.
Will you make sure all the principals don't, there's no money left?
This is it, it is it all. There's some money left in there, I won't say how much, uh, not, not a lot, uh, but there, there's enough for this purchase, so.
I know this is not true with whiteboards, but what about Chromebooks? Like how, are we looking for any new commercials or anything?
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Cause I know they're breaking and falling apart and it's weird, they're not working.
Yeah, so we have a budget, I built it into our technology budget every year to purchase, um, a new allotment of Chromebooks. And so we, I think the last purchase, we just bought about six hundred of them. Um, and I plan for that every single year in the budget. The one-to-one initiative is probably one of the most expensive things we do, but it's like, we kind of have to, the world we're in today, so it's worth it.
I'm not sure if this question is for you or anyone else in the room, but how, what's the process like? What says we've got a hundred thousand dollars left of the two thousand seventeen bond money? Is it the first person to get to the agenda that gets it? Or how do we determine the priority? Because, I mean, I know that we've got lots of places for this money. So how is the hierarchy determined and why is this the first, the most important?
So I've done, I think in my, in two years, I've done four different updates of where the money goes. And then these two find different grants. Um, why we have some money left over is we were able to move quite a bit of our fencing projects out because they didn't secure in their future. And then we had a huge project, the front door, um, making all our front doors the same as far as swipe in, swipe out, that way we can go through the keys. Um, so that's why we have some money left. I get requests from the people sitting in the audience and then we try to determine, like, safety. It's usually right now, it's safety projects and cross customer figures that we, and it's deferred maintenance is mostly what we use it for now. Because we don't have that deferred maintenance fund, which will come with the levy a little bit, but more so with the, um, I totally just forgot, the, the twenty million, the new facilities money.
So you guys decide the priorities of what comes to you and what we need and what's best for the students?
Full critical is, is the most.
So it's more than like.
We come and get your guys' permission.
It's more than like repairing a roof or?
And right now, the, the money is so small that it's been basically just safety, um, is what we're doing for survival.
The widowmakers is what we're talking about.
This project was more just with the screens, we, we need to replace the screens, but when we did replace the screen, then we had just a blank wall behind and, and the teachers lost their whiteboards.
Is this a new whiteboard that we're looking at here or is this a widowmaker?
This is, right here, four by six.
Yeah, this is a four by six whiteboard. So what will, most of the class, so some classrooms won't need anything. They have whiteboards that we can move and make space and put the TV in there, there's no problem. Um, but they will have like a seventy-five inch touch, it'll be a touch panel TV. This is not a touch panel TV, this is, um, just a basic TV. So a TV in the middle of the room with two four-foot whiteboards on each side. Or there is some, uh, in the quote, you'll notice there's some four-by-six whiteboards also. Um, that's because some classrooms will have space for a six-foot whiteboard, not all will. And so we just wanted to make sure that we have, um, an ability to make it, to make it the best we could for our teachers.
So it's like, it's a consensus for all of the principals, which they.
And if we don't replace the whiteboard, we get teachers that'll use the TV as their whiteboard or they'll complain to all of us in the room. Teachers gotta give their whiteboards, other teachers.
I was an English teacher, you gotta have a whiteboard. It's like.
So I, this is, I know this is a really stupid question. When you're talking about a whiteboard, are you talking about dry erase over here? Or are you talking about a TV that, no, whiteboard, oh, okay.
So yeah, I mean, that's a really good distinction. The, the new TVs that they get have a digital whiteboard in them, um, which is a really cool feature. So, uh, they have that component and then they will also have these things. But teachers have, like, they, they like to post the agenda for the day up and they want it to stay up there in front of the kids. They have, you know, they're scheduled, elementary teachers, um, have lots of stuff up on there that are super creative.
Or sometimes when you're doing a math problem, the kids aren't getting it, it's nice to pick up a whiteboard and they can see it.
Yeah, it's not magnetic, they're in control.
Yeah, magnetic is a very, especially in elementary, huge.
So the, the whiteboards that are on the quote, have, they all have a map, uh, they have a map rail like this, and they have a pencil tray like this, and they're magnetic. So those are really kind of the, we gotta have those. They have, they absolutely have to be magnetic, so.
All right, thank you, any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I do just have one comment.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to see the quotes, if there's two quotes, it'd be awesome if we get a quote from them, so we can see it.
This one is not just.
I don't know, but we haven't had access to the link, so I, maybe it's here now, but let me see. I mean, I just wondered.
No, there's just one at this time.
Just if we're getting two quotes, I think it's good to just share them with us for comparison.
Just for a point of reference, the other one, it has green header on it. Um, and the four-foot whiteboards in there were, uh, three hundred and fifty bucks a piece, I think. Um, and this one is three forty, or two, two forty-five, the other one were, was three fifty-five or something.
No, we just have the one.
We want one hundred percent. I can get that for you.
Yeah, sounds good.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the use of the thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for whiteboards from SBI.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I second.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, Hillary?
Aye.
JD? Aye. Michael?
Aye.
And Kirstie?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Director Ready? And, okay, consider the process for superintendent search consultant. Um, I guess I'm up, uh, also, our attorney's here also, I believe.
She's just on call.
Oh, she's on call? Okay, thank you. Um, so, as you all know, Wendy Johnson has, is moving on to Boise. And so we are beginning our process of finding a superintendent. And, um, in order to be transparent and in order to do what I believe is the correct way to do it, uh, we want to go out for what's called a RFP, I believe. And, um, take a look at some consultants and have them put in some bids for us to take a look at, to see where we want to go. We still have a good timeline. And so, is there anything that Jill would like to, uh, also?
I just called her, so she's just on the call.
Okay.
She's just gonna listen.
Okay, so she's just listening. So what we need to do is decide what that process looks like and what are some of the things that we would like to see as we go out to bid. So I'll open that up.
So I don't necessarily have a problem with a repress for proposal, but would like to make note that neither Idaho code nor our policy requires it for a, for a contract under seventy-five thousand dollars. And it does tend to take a lot of time, more legwork, and so I think that's just something to note.
Okay. Anybody else, what we'd like to see?
So we are going to get several bids from different companies and decide what is going to work best.
Yes, I think that's the way to put it. Um, that's the whole idea. So what are we looking for? Are we looking for, and I'll just give some, um, do we want the proposals to be under twenty thousand? Um, do we want, what kind of, um, do they want, want to present a timeline? Most of the proposal I, proposals I've seen all do pretty much the same thing. Yeah, same process. Um, do we want to pick, how many do we want to collect? I guess we're opening it to everybody, that's part of our transparency. Um, so what are some?
Well, I know we discussed, um, ISBA and then Hillary have a couple quotes as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if three is a magic number or if you think you need another one.
Um, I think what we're trying to do is be transparent so that if a company comes to us and says, wait, you didn't take my bid? And some of the community says, wait, we wanted them, then we have those qualifications to take a look at that and decide which one we want. So that's kind of what we're doing, is we're kind of opening it up for anybody who'd like to.
So right now, um, like, I solicited two bids.
So, right now, like, I solicited two bids with the, I mean, and Kim knew about that at the time, and one of the companies was somebody that emailed, or sent a letter to the, to Kim as the chairperson. And was also recommended by West Data School District as somewhat, as a private company that they would recommend using. And the other one was one that I found and researched online and also solicited bids. So, we have those two bids right now. And the board has those proposals as well. I don't think we have any type of a proposal from ISBA yet, correct?
Yeah, we do.
Oh.
We do have that. And part of it, just so you guys know, we belong to ISBA, that's, so because of that, because of our belonging, and anybody can jump in here, then we're able to take a look at what they have to offer. And they are the state board, so, yeah, they're, they're one of the proposals that we do have.
Well, they're not the state board, they're an association.
Idaho State Board Association, thank you.
I know school board association, so they're not really a part of the state necessarily.
Well, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, so, yeah.
So, are we gonna have a presentation about each person?
Well, I'm gonna, here's some things that we can, that's something we can talk about.
Like, I know we're gonna allow other people to apply, but I feel like that's a given. We also need to send it out and open it up to whoever, so having the companies present would be a first start.
Okay.
So, we know who we want to go with.
Or do we wanna just decide and then have one or two companies present? Because I, I think we wait for every company to present and might kick it down further down the road. So, maybe we could take a look at the, our top two.
I mean, can't, can't we, can't we see a presentation on paper?
Yep.
Instead of-
Proposals on paper?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't really want the five people in here presenting. I would rather see it on paper and then decide.
I think-
And I'm fine with that.
I think three proposals on paper, and then we can decide if we want an additional, want in-person proposals. Seems reasonable to me.
And I better read this. Some options to consider. These were three main options that are available to school districts. One, appoint someone internal to do the work, a person from the district staff who has experience with hiring to carry out the search. Two thousand and five Assistant Superintendent Mark Van Skyver appointed that, and that process resulted in Jay Hummel. The one that we're looking at right now is contract with a firm to carry out a search. That's what we're looking at right now. Best practice is to approach selection of a consultant in a manner similar to that used in seeking other professional services through requests for proposals, which is an RFP. And then there's some templates, and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at those. I kinda like the second one, but I'm hoping. And then the third one is to just appoint a candidate from within the district, and that's been done. Two thousand and thirteen, Wendy Johnson interview was appointed by the board, and then we just recently accorded, appointed Kim Beckdahl as our interim superintendent for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, you might wanna take a look at those two templates.
I don't have the template.
Oh, you don't?
They're, they're under the cooler, walk-in cooler filter?
Walk-in cooler, oh, they're in the walk-in cooler.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I know I looked at them and I liked the second one. Yeah.
Yeah, sample, I, that gives like, yeah, potential proposal. And you like B?
I did.
Oh, I found it in the walk-in cooler.
Okay. I liked B because I thought it set it up a little bit better. See, is this the B one? Yeah. I liked the expectations of the consultant. It was a little more detailed, and then the proposal specifications, so I did like those better.
I don't, that's not on the, the process is in the whiteboard. What?
She found it.
Yeah, I found it at a different-
I know that I, I, I saw them, but I wasn't on this one. I was on the one with the link. So, I did like the B, but if we decide to go with, which I think we're leaning that way, with the RFP, I kinda like RFP, sorry. I kinda like the appendix B. I liked the way it was set up.
Would, are we, we're gonna adopt one of those right now, or are we just making a motion?
Well, this is just a template. We don't have to adopt this, but I did like what it had to say.
Well, I make a motion that we open it up for, for bids, so that we can decide.
Okay.
But with what cons, what, she's saying appendix B would be-
We need to know what, what the qualifications are. In an RFP, you have to develop like standards almost.
Like a template. And this is just a template.
And that's why it's really time consuming and it takes a lot of extra work.
And that's probably why I wanna just probably go with appendix B here.
Well, I haven't had them in, I need to be able to read through them, cause the previously did not know they were in the walk-in cooler, so.
Okey-dokey, that walk-in cooler. So, do you-
I, I make the motion that we go with appendix B with my original motion. Should I restate that?
Yes.
And make a motion that we open up the process for superintendent search for more companies with the-
Template. As a request for proposal.
Request for proposal.
RFP.
The RFP for, and using appendix B as the template.
And so, with that template, there's some links in here that we would need to fill in.
Correct.
And when would we do that?
I would assume if we adopt it, we'd do it right.
Right now.
Yeah, I would think we could fill it in. I don't think that's a problem.
Chairman Nixon?
Yes?
This is Jill.
Hi, Jill.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, I, I, I like that motion. What I would recommend is to keep that motion, but with any adjustments, with, with, whether it's you as the chairman or another board member, to, to make sure that I can review it, to make sure we have every, all of our bases covered. And then if, if the board is comfortable with that, then once that, using that template and once the kind of final tweaks are made, then we could either bring it back to the board for another review, or if the board is comfortable to go ahead and, and publish that and send that out for, for publication, so that you can start receiving bids.
So, we would fill this out, send it to her, she would review it. We can have revisions come to us as a board, review it again, and then finalize it.
Or she-
It'll be a motion.
Or, maybe I didn't understand her, or we can just accept this and then get started? Is that what she was saying?
Well, she still wants to review it, so I would like to see it.
Where, yeah, and I'm fine with that. Yeah, yeah.
I think it would be nice, so that we don't have to take another meeting to do it, if we could ask, if we could appoint someone on the board to be able to work with the lawyer on this.
I, and I, I, I think that's what I would like to do, so that we can get going on it, have the caveat, and I'm fine with that.
Did anybody else wanna do it?
I'd, I'd say we have Chairman Nixon do it.
I'm fine with that.
For clarity.
Well, I feel like in my conversations with Chairman Nixon, she's leaning towards a certain consultant, so I would like to select a different one.
Well, and I'd like to tell you, I'm not leaning toward, because I wanna do what's best for our, for this board.
But it doesn't matter.
She's not accepting.
I'm not accepting.
We're still gonna-
Right.
I, yeah, I'm not accepting any of that. All I'm doing is working with her as in the caveat.
But it's also, that's also okay for more than one person to put their name in the hat and we just vote on it.
We can have two, not three, cause it'll be-
We can have two, if you wanna be a part of it.
I don't have a problem with that, if you want to work with me.
I would like to, yes.
Okay.
There we go.
So, let's make that motion again. Do I have a motion?
Can you do that while we're-
I'm not making another motion. My, my motion stands. If someone else wants to make another motion, go ahead.
Okay, so I make a motion that we accept process B to outsource the potential companies that we will get proposals from to look at, to hire out for the superintendent, accepting appendix B with Chairman Nixon and Chairman Lowe, working with the attorney to fill in, trustee, yes, trustee Lowe and Nixon to work with the attorney to fill it all in and be done with the process.
And after she's, that sounds good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that good enough?
All right.
Could, could we amend that to also say that we will have presentations in June? At the June meeting then, like, well-
Yeah, I think we're gonna do-
I think that depends on what she finds.
Like, the date could be that we would have that by June.
You'll work on that when you're making up the-
With the lawyer.
They'll make it up a lawyer, yeah.
All right, so let's start with you, who-
Hi.
And JD?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. And we are, we are beginning our search. Thank you, Jill.
All right, bye.
All right, and now, first reading of policies discussed in the Policy Advisory Committee, Kristi Bruce, and Lowe and Director Brady.
This is when everyone's gonna leave.
What?
You don't wanna hear your policies in the meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Just a reminder that we kinda tried to simplify it. We'll do adoptions, then amendments, then removals. I stand to speak on any of them that you would like to, to pull out. So, I stand for the six policies that are up for adoption.
Um, you mean, under A, three A?
Yeah, any, any questions and discussion?
Three A is what we're doing first. Just a second.
I had a member of the community talk to me about this one, transgender and gender non-conforming. It says as perceived by some, down here. Gender expression, number, and all, and the definitions.
That was also discussed in our group too.
What, what was the reason for that?
It's following the Idaho law that was just passed.
So, that has to be put in there, okay?
Well, no, this, actually, this definition was taken from NAPA and West Data. They had a similar, the, the definitions that Jill gave didn't have that. So, it, it totally could be up to you guys if, if those are in there. I think the question was, by saying, without saying it's perceived by some, that means that definition is by all. It just kinda gave that freedom to some people, maybe don't agree with that.
I prefer that the is perceived by some to be deleted myself. I think it would clarify.
On each one?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and it just, for the, she said that at our, at our-
Yeah.
And that's what I heard from the community member. They, they thought it'd be, and if we delete that, does it make any difference?
I think it just clarifies the policy myself.
It just sticks to the definition. It doesn't have that disclaimer in there, I guess, as per lack of better.
So, I'm, I'm fine with that policy with that deleted, though.
I would agree.
Bring that to second, read, show you that that's been deleted, and we're gonna be amazing at least, posting that one.
Yeah, and I didn't have any other issues with, uh, A.
Adoptions.
With adoption A's, or the A part. So, do I have a motion? And does there anybody else I should say?
Lot of us, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I make a motion that we adopt the following policies, five nineteen, do I have to read everything?
You have to read the number, and then with five nineteen, please state that we're going to remove the-
Perceived by some.
Perceived by some.
Yeah.
But do you want me to read transgender, gender non-conforming? Have to say that?
Just the number.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion that we adopt the following policies, five nineteen, with removing as perceived by some, and adopt policy seven oh one, policy seven oh four, seven twenty, seven twenty-six, and seven thirty-four.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
All right.
Motion passes.
Number B, I did have some questions about this one, too.
So, there's thirteen that's, that are ready for amendment. I stand for any questions.
Policy six-ten, high school graduation requirements. And somewhere in there, you have, it says forty-eight, but then it says forty-six, so I just think it needs to be changed, and it's towards the top. And I can't see that. Maybe I should look here.
The state requires forty-six credits?
Right, but then it says, you say forty-six and then you say forty-eight. So, that just needs to be changed.
Gotcha. Doesn't match.
And then, number four.
You're taking notes, right?
Sorry.
Number four on the same.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And it says something about must enrolling, must enroll, yes. So, is that deleted or in there? I wasn't sure, cause it's red, and so I was confused.
That is not deleted, so that's our current practice. It's in our policy that you have to be enrolled as a senior for Kuna School District. That's not a state requirement. That is a district.
That's our district. So, the reason for the red is cause that's a district, okay?
Yeah.
It was that, I just couldn't tell. Okay, that was my question.
That makes it current.
Okay.
But there are discussions about changing it, but for right now, that's just updated to the policy.
Makes it.
Okay. And then down, number four, senior project. Are we, and I guess, I don't have a senior, so I just wanna make sure. Is it down further?
Yes.
Talks, I think you go down further.
It's further.
Yeah, down. Are we doing senior projects still? Is those things that every senior does?
Required by district. I think it's still required by the state.
Well, like I said, I didn't have-
What?
We do their ELA classes.
So, it's done in the ELA class? Okay, I just wanted to know.
And it is required by the state?
Yes.
Okay. All right, those are my questions on that one.
And now, Kuna just does what's required by the state before we did.
A whole bunch of others. You see, like, that's, my boys had done that, so I was just like, okay, is that still going? Then I had a question, seven thirty, student bus conduct.
Um, this is-
Right there. And at the, I think it's number eleven. It talks about electric devices, but it doesn't say, it doesn't, is that underneath a copy of rules? Is that what it means? I, I couldn't tell. So, that's part of eleven.
Correct.
So, if they have a device, that's a part I was trying to figure out.
So, this is where we can have our own local rules? So, what it's saying is whatever our local rules for electric devices have to be handed out prior.
I guess, to me, and maybe it's just me, yeah, I, I didn't see it that way, so I, I wanted to know if it needed to be more detailed, so I know.
I don't think it's very clear.
Can they have them? Do they can't have them?
Yeah, what's the violation? Like, it's saying, upon continued violation, what is, what does that mean? Any of the rules of student conduct as pertaining, like, as outlined where?
It, it just didn't, I, I couldn't follow it very well. And I didn't know electronic devices, does that mean yes, no, can't have, can? Oh, I, I just wanted more detail, but maybe I'm just the only one that saw that, so, discussion?
Well, I didn't notice it, but I do agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, would you guys like that-
Does it need to be specific?
The copy of the rules?
Well, just what are the rules? A copy of the rules of student bus conduct, that, is that more than electric devices?
I mean, they are allowed to have-
Just specific to electric devices, so the copy of the-
But they are allowed to have their phones out?
Yeah, yeah, so like their cell phone, yeah.
They can have their cell phones.
They just can't have like sound playing.
Because in some schools, you can't have electric devices.
On the bus.
Well, like at Fremont, you can't have them out during class, so we, like, so that's what she's asking. Is that extending over into this, or are they actually allowed to have them on the bus?[1663.42]
So, they have actual bus rules, I think, that each student will get on the bus, and there's probably a, I know there's a difference for elementary as opposed to secondary.
I just, as a parent, I would like to see what that means.
Yep, I agree.
So, you want the rules in the policy?
I, I think that's what I want, yeah. I don't know what the rules say, but I, I want something that's more spelled out.
So, similar, like having every classroom rule in policy?
Not every classroom, well, I just-
I can, you can look at the rules, I mean, if there's twenty, then maybe there's not some that don't apply, so I guess we could decide.
We have rules listed on Transportation Department on website.
So, maybe even if you put that in, so a parent knows where to go.
So, they're posted on the bus also.
Yeah, so if you put that cutting in, this was a parent, I'd know where to go to see that.
Because if it's not in there-
And we would just need to write it here every time there are rules.
Then a parent can say, well, it wasn't in the policy, so.
And it can be changed on the website and, and without going through the policy process, so I think we want to-
Something similar to like, like classroom rules?
Yeah. That's, I, I feel like we need to know what they are before we can-
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some clarity, so when I take it back.
So, basically, those rules should be in the policy.
Okay.
Agreed.
Or a place to link them, one, by the two.
So, we'll pull this one-
Okay.
And do a second first read with you guys.
Yeah, that, and those were the three that I, those are the three things I have, or two. Any, anybody else?
I have nothing on B for me.
I make a motion that we approve the following policies with, um, adding, and policy two, or six ten, we add the forty-six credits.
Forty-eight.
Make sure that's square. It's forty-
Yeah.
Forty-eight for Kuna's policy.
Okay, forty-eight.
Boom, gets that number.
And that, policy seven thirty, the student bus conduct, um, there's a link for, uh-
I'll just pull that one.
She's gonna read a bit.
Okay, so then we're pulling that one.
So, I make a motion that we approve the policy four oh seven for, or five fifty-one, five sixty-one, five seventy, six ninety-nine, seven twelve, seven sixteen, seven twenty-two, seven thirty-eight, um, seven forty, and ten thirty.
And six ten.
And six ten with the change.
I said that one.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any more discussion? All right, Kirstie?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, all right, this one should be easier. Removing the following policies, can we have any discussion?
And none of these removals are tied to that one we pulled back.
Right.
They've all been added to a new, some other policy, so they're not just completely removed.
Right. Or they're not up to code, or tied?
These are all been, exactly, they were condensed.
Pendant, oh, these are all condensed, because sometimes it depends on if they're still up to code.
If something came out.
I make a motion that we remove the following policies, five seventy-two, five seventy-five, six seventy-nine point eight, seven hundred, seven forty-two, and seven forty-six.
Do I have a second? Okay, on favor, so, is Kirstie?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And Hillary?
Aye.
Oh, wow, we're on the good of the order now.
Chairman Nixon?
Yes.
I forgot one thing, too. We have our new initial point, um, principal, Jessica Griswold, here in the audience tonight, so I just wanted her to stand up and, so you could see who she is, we're really excited.
Hi, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction. Um, and you are in teaching at initial point, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Continued, continued success. All right, good of the order. Uh, we have some webinars. Um, the one thing that I looked at, ISBA requires literacy intervention orientation and training, that is, I think I talked with you, uh, Trustee Low, about that, and looked into it, and yes. Wow. Can you tell us, Deanne, about that, 'cause we looked that up?
So, so, the literacy is covered with our school board meetings that we do in September, when we're going over the literacy, um, with the way that the schools are coming in and discussing the, um, trainings that are going on, and how, um, the, um, testings are going through, and where the standards are coming from. So, we're getting that training through our meeting. Um, you can go back and review the meeting from last year. Um, but this is something that, um, if you decide that you would like to do it this way, it is two different days, um, for those times, it's an hour, it's through a webinar, um-
I think there's a little post-test, too, the one I heard.
There is a post-test, um, it is, it, the literacy is a required training that you need to have, but you can do it through our board, through discussion.
The school board discussion. So, I just want to make sure.
If you decide that you want to do it this way, um, you have to let me know, so that I can register you, and then we will be reimbursed through the state, and I have to have that all filled out, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think listening to the board will be a little bit easier, um, and it's a better, you get a better idea, and it's more geared towards what Kuna does.
And it fulfills the Idaho Code-
It does, yes.
-training, so we don't have to do anything else. That's what I'm for.
Yeah. So, it, it does look good if you'd like to go, but anyway. May twenty-second will be our IPHS graduation at the Kuna Performing Arts Center, and that is always, I recommend, that is a wonderful one to go to. It's great to see those kids graduate. May twenty-third is a long one, but it's a Kuna High School graduation at the Ford Idaho Center, and that also is great.
How many kids are graduating?
Three hundred eighty-seven.
Oh, wow, okay.
Three hundred eighty-seven hands to shake, way to go.
Is there some recommended time that we need to arrive?
You have an email.
Before it starts.
Before it starts is fine.
Usually about thirty minutes.
I say about thirty minutes before, and they'll give you a ticket for parking.
They will not.
Oh, they're not this year, oh, sorry.
There's a different procedure for it, you just need to show your regalia that you will be part of the procedure. Um, you'll have an email tonight when you get home, um, so everything is to arrive, you need to arrive by one thirty. Um, everyone does all of their little, whatever they need to do, and be ready to walk at two thirty.
With all the parents and the families, I recommend getting there earlier, or it will take you forever. The line is really long to get in.
It's my favorite song. Dun, dun, ta-dun, dun.
And parking, the longer you wait, the more parking is taken.
Um, yeah. You can park, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Beckdahl showed me the shortcut in the back.
Can you guys park in the back?
That's what, she showed me the back, I don't know if you've been there.
You just go by the little box there, the guy here.
And it's, it's a shortcut.
You go in the back door.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need more information.
We can, we can get you that.
I can tell you.
All right, there's one more. June twelfth, at nine AM to one PM, there will be an ISBA Leadership Institute at West Ada in the Satooth Boardroom in Brady. So, those are pretty good orders. Anything else we did at the order before I take a motion to adjourn?
Yes, the leadership one, I need to find out who I need to register.
Okay, so Kirstie, is there anybody else who'd be interested in the June twelfth Leadership Institute?
I'm not.
All right.
I motion that be adjourned.
Second.
All right, that was quick, thank you very much. All in favor, and Hillary?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirstie? All right, thank you, and thank you for coming.